Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. We're about to start in three minutes. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I can see more people trickling in. We're just about to get started. Someone asked if we'll be focusing on candidates from each district at a time. Yeah, we'll be going in order. District one, then district three, district five, and then district seven. All right, it is 5:00 PM. I think it is time to get started. Thank you so much for being here, everyone. My name is Jenna Cotta. I am the San Jose City Hall reporter for San Jose Spotlight, the city's only nonprofit news organization dedicated to local independent political and business reporting in the South Bay. Welcome to our 2022 City Council Candidate Forum. We'd like to thank our sponsor, the San Jose Silicon Valley NAACP, for making tonight's forum possible. Before we get started, here are the rules. Each candidate will get one minute for opening remarks and one minute for closing remarks. For each question, we'll rotate the order of candidate responses. Each candidate will receive one minute to answer each question and 30 seconds for rebuttal if requested by the candidates. And in order to keep things moving along, we'll allow each candidate a maximum of three total rebuttals throughout the evening. So to get us started, I'd like to welcome the candidates for our first panel of the evening, San Jose City Council District One, which encompasses West San Jose, including the Winchester Orchard, Lynn Haven, Cadillac, and Blackford neighborhoods. With District One Representative Vice Mayor Chappie Jones terming out this year, the candidates here are Santa Clara County Board of Education trustee Rosemary Comay and Ramona Snyder. Candidate Tim Geldersleeve isn't available to participate tonight. So for opening statements, we'll start with Ms. Comay.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity to share tonight. Hello, my name is Rosemary Comay. I'm running for San Jose City Council in District One. I'm running to really bring my depth and breadth of proven experience as well as accountability and transparency to City Hall. I believe that we need to focus on a few key issues and have key performance indicators to ensure we achieve our desired results. My vision for our community is to focus on affordable housing, homelessness, public health and safety, and strengthen city services. I'm a lifelong public servant and former nonprofit community executive, an adjunct professor at San Jose State, and a small business owner. I've been very engaged in my local community, as was mentioned, with my trustee seat. The district is really growing and changing, and I look forward to being a voice for our community to ensure it continues to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's go ahead with Ms. Snyder.
Thank you for having me. My name is Ramona Ariano Snyder. I've been a resident of West San Jose since I was two. I attended Campbell Union School District Schools, San Jose City College, and I have two degrees from San Jose State. I've been married for 20 years and have three children. I've been a community leader for over a decade. I've been active and engaged. I've helped build two playgrounds, added public art, secured grants for school sports equipment, two libraries, and play elements at two small parks. I'm running because I want to keep City Council on task in providing the city's services the residents are paying for. I want the residents, the voices of the residents, to matter. I would like more police, community service officers, and license plate readers to deter crime. I will advocate for local control of land use zoning policies, affordable and market rate housing, while protecting single-family zoning and property owner rights. And lastly, I'd like San Jose to actually hit their goals for the multitude of plans that we create. As a nonpartisan position, I plan to represent everyone, and the people that have endorsed or contributed to my campaign reflects that. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's get started with the questions. To start off, what is one City Council vote from the past year that you wish had gone differently? And let's start with you, Ms. Snyder.
Oh, wow, there's a lot of City Council votes I would have liked to have gone differently. I would have liked that we didn't pass the gun policy. I would have liked that we didn't vote for noncitizen voting rights. I would have liked that we didn't approve digital billboards. I'll just stop there.
Thanks. How about you, Ms. Comay?
Thank you. I guess the one that stands out most recently is the digital billboard. I think that I would have opted for perhaps something different, but definitely that would be one that I would definitely wish had gone differently.
Sure. The next question, which city departments do you feel are overfunded as well as underfunded? Let's start with you, Ms. Comay.
So I think that one that is underfunded is really our public safety. I think that in terms of what is needed for public safety, we definitely need to boost that and provide resources and much more attention to that department. I think that, for the most part, most of the departments have a lot of vacancies. And so in terms of really fulfilling their needs, I think that although all of the departments are lacking in being full, I really think that perhaps in terms of overfunded, I would not put a finger on that because I think that really right now I see that there are a lot of departments that are underfunded.
What about you, Ms. Snyder?
I would definitely agree that our public safety is underfunded since we do not have adequate police for a city of a million people at this time. As far as overfunded, I don't have an opinion on this at this time because I really would need to look at all the budgets of the different departments and see where we are at staffing levels and what needs are of that department. So I don't have a department that I could identify at this time.
Sure. What do you think the balance is for commercial development and affordable housing development? Let's start with Ms. Snyder.
Balance between commercial development and affordable housing development? Well, our urban village plans do combine housing with commercial, and there should be a 15% component for affordability within these new developments. Ideally, the developers do have the option to pay the inclusionary fee instead of putting in the affordability component. I think that there needs to be more affordable housing, definitely, but we also do need to add more jobs to our city, which means adding more commercial and businesses. So there is a balance, and I think finding that balance is one of the goals that I would be doing as a council member within my district.
Thank you. Ms. Comay?
Thank you for the question. I think it's a very, very important question simply because for as long as I can remember, the city of San Jose really had a jobs-housing imbalance. And we have looked at that over many, many, many years. I would like to see a lot more commercial development simply because I think that if we are able to increase the jobs, then that would really help offset the costs for the services that are needed. Housing is desperately needed. I want to see more affordable housing, but at the same time, if we don't do what we need to in terms of increasing that commercial ratio for development, then you're going to have the continuation of always needing more housing and being a bedroom community for other communities, which San Jose has done for many, many years. So let's take a look at that jobs-housing ratio and see what we could do.
Thank you. The Winchester Hotel was largely unpopular among local residents. With urban villages being built out, how do you plan to balance resident concerns with city plans? Let's start with Ms. Comay.
So one of the things I'd like to go back to is really trying to include the community beforehand in order to really get a more collaborative approach to trying to build these urban villages. I know that it's very complex. I know that it takes a lot of energy and time and resources, but I think that the outcomes would be so much better. I think that where we have had community engagement in creating an urban village plan, we can learn from them. We could learn from their mistakes. We could learn what we could do better. But I think that that community engagement is critically important to be successful.
Thank you. How about you, Ms. Snyder?
I've been actively involved with the residents that are objecting to the hotel for over a year. I've been on the Zoom meetings with them. I have listened to their concerns and their conversations with the developer. The developer met with these residents multiple times where they raised the concerns about the hotel. Then recently, the developer met with them and stated he was willing to adjust the plan to condos for 55 and over residents and would make it a story lower, but was discouraged from pursuing this idea by city staff. Staff stated it most likely would not be approved because condos with no commercial would not meet the urban village requirement, even though it might have been more accepted by the neighbors. Ultimately, the deputy planning director stated in San Jose Spotlight that residents have very valid concerns and issues with the project, but it meets all the requirements, so I'll go ahead and approve it. So even though something meets all the requirements doesn't mean it's the right fit for that particular parcel of land. And so I stand with the residents on this issue.
Thank you. Mayor Licardo has called the rapidly growing homeless crisis in San Jose his biggest failure. What would you do differently from the current City Council to get people off the streets and keep them housed? Let's start with Ms. Snyder.
Homelessness is a complicated situation because we have different reasons as to why individuals are unhoused. Individuals who are mentally unstable or drug addicted need the appropriate services to get stabilized in treatment centers. I'm an advocate of Governor Newsom's Care Court, which offers court-ordered individualized interventions and services, stabilization of medications, advanced medical health directives, and housing assistance. And it can be up for 20 to 24 months. The plan also includes a public defender and a supporter to help individuals make self-directed care decisions. I'm glad the county opted into Laura's Law, as it seems to be working, but it needs to be expanded to a longer duration. Many churches offer addiction programs. We need to partner more with these churches. And the county should prioritize family reunification for unhoused individuals who are not from San Jose, which is about 16%. Once an unhoused individual is stabilized, get them job skills if needed, then get them re-acclimated into society. We currently have 145 unhoused individuals in my district, and I feel no one should be living on the street or in an encampment.
Thank you. Ms. Comay?
Yes, so first of all, I just want to say that a lot has been done, although a lot still needs to be done. And I think that Mayor Licardo really has taken leadership in terms of trying to do the best that he can with the resources he has. And when you think about emergency housing, emergency interim housing, supportive housing, bridge housing, really trying to find solutions to this very, very complex problem, and on top of that, dealing with COVID has been a tremendous challenge for all of us. I do believe that in terms of how we can respond, I'm uncertain about the Care Court. I think that we need to take a look at how that would be implemented and really see how we can do better by the people who are houseless.
Thank you. San Jose's pension costs continue to take a major bite out of the budget and now exceed $4 billion in unfunded pension liabilities. What would you do as City Council member to address this? Let's start with Ms. Comay.
So one of the things I think would be helpful is to really set aside a fund. These are obligations that have already been made. These are obligations that we must pay. I understand that this year the budget had some surplus, and I think that it was a good move to try to implement more foot patrols in the community. But I also think that I'd like to see a set aside to deal with the need to fill the pension. So over time, that it wouldn't be as much of a burden as we pay as you go.
Gotcha. Thank you. And what about you, Ms. Snyder?
Well, we can't do anything about the pensions that were obligated to pay. I personally was the result of a pension that was taken away from me at my former job overnight. They basically said we weren't going to do pensions anymore, and I felt very slighted by that because you don't just change the rules in the middle of the game. So we can't do anything about the pensions that we've already committed to people because they took these jobs knowing that they were going to have those pensions when they retire. And that's the only right thing to do is to give them their pensions. So as far as dealing with pension obligations, that's another issue I would need to look into to figure out ways that we can address this. I know we have a commission that does oversight regarding our pensions and gives recommendations on how to move forward. I would meet with them and find ways that we can deal with this. But again, I would need to do a deep dive in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. We've reported on the Valley Transportation Authority's decrease in light ridership and its growing budget woes. San Jose is trying to get people out of their cars, yet the light rail system is disconnected and slow. That is also one of the goals of urban villages. What would you do as a council member to improve public transit in our city? Let's start with Ms. Snyder.
San Jose is an auto-oriented city. Region-wide transit carries 1 in 10 people to work. It costs more than $2.2 billion to run these 27 transit systems each year. The costs are increasing faster than inflation, and transit speeds are slowing, which is adding to costs. Buses need to have their own designated lanes or transit signal priority at intersections so they can go faster. We need to focus on fast, efficient transit in highly dense areas to encourage ridership. A universal fare system might make it easier to use all transit options. A universal system map would make it easier to plan your trips. I also love the ITN America dignified transportation program for our senior population. I'd like to see this program started in San Jose. I'm excited that West San Jose is a focus area for bikeway infrastructure investments, including protected bike lanes because 6% of San Jose resident trips are shorter than 3 miles. Protected bike lanes might encourage residents to ride their bikes more. But ideally, you know, we're still a car-centric city, so we need to change that.
What about you, Ms. Comay?
So I'm a person who didn't start actually having a car until I was 24. So I know what it's like to be in a metropolitan area where transit is what you take. And I think that we need to find ways to find it as easy as possible to use. I also believe that there needs to be greater incentives. When I taught at San Jose State, one of the things that was an incentive was for $25 a month, we're able to get a pass, right? Wouldn't that be great if we incentivize? I know that the Caltrain is now trying to incentivize this month, and for those of you who like to take Caltrain, it's, I think, half off to try to get the ridership back up. And I think that once people try it, they realize, oh, well, this is what can work and what cannot work. And I also think that it might be a good idea to bring in those who actually can use it every day and bring the bus drivers and others together to find better ways of doing the system.
Thank you. What would you do to promote greater racial justice and social equity in San Jose? Let's start with you, Ms. Comay.
So one of the things I'm really proud of is, as a member of the leadership at the Silicon Valley Education Foundation, we started these bold conversations on race and equity. And those conversations, people are at different points of the spectrum, and I think you need to start with a conversation and a conversation with those that have different views and an understanding that we all don't have the same lens. And I think that it's very hard, and sometimes there's denial in that point of view. But I think that that's how you start, and I think that we need to bring communities and groups together. You've got to remember, the last two years, we have been socially isolated, and I think that that adds to everything and the complexity of the challenges that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder? Oh, I think you're muted.
Oops, sorry. According to the Organization Race Forward, racial equity is a process of eliminating racial disparities and improving outcomes for everyone. It's intentional and continual practice of changing policies, practices, systems, and structures by prioritizing measured change in the lives of people of color. Our newly formed Office of Racial Equity will be addressing how San Jose can be more racially equitable city. As a second-generation Mexican-American, I know my grandparents' history of how they came to the United States. My grandmother struggled with being a non-English speaker, being widowed at 29 and raising six children by herself. She worked two jobs as a house cleaner and a canary worker to provide for her family. She later became a U.S. citizen, which was one of her proudest moments. When I asked my mom about her childhood, she tells me there's not much to tell because she was so incredibly poor. It just breaks my heart. My uncles joined the military as a pathway out of that poverty. And as a city, we need to do what we can to provide additional assistance to any particular community that is struggling. And I'm hoping that this Office of Racial Equity will highlight areas that we need to assist.
Thank you. When it comes to economic development, we've reported how Santana Row and Valley Fair are thriving in this district while businesses are suffering in other parts of the city. What is the secret to this area's commercial success, and what can other districts learn from it? Let's start with Ms. Snyder.
Santana Row, yes, right by my house. San Jose has a jobs-to-employment resident imbalance. People live daily to work in other cities. They return to San Jose to sleep. This is not helping curtail vehicle miles traveled, traffic congestion, greenhouse emissions, or achieving our climate smart goals. We need to make San Jose a regional job center, and our Ambition 2040 Plan seeks to support 382,000 jobs in downtown North San Jose, Edenville, Monterey, Fort Worth, Evergreen, and in these urban villages. We need to attract more small, mid, and large-sized businesses to San Jose where we have 60,000 small businesses already, but we also have a lot of vacant storefronts. There's many steps that are required to open businesses, and we need to expand our small business ally department to assist people who wish to open small businesses, getting through the required steps and get the support they need to thrive in our city. Santana Row is just a great space. I mean, it's fun to walk, even if you don't buy anything. It's a great space to people watch, to buy a coffee, and just walk. And we need more great open spaces like that where people can shop.
What about you, Ms. Comay?
Thank you. So one of the things I think that is very successful about Santana Row is that it brings people together. There's also a very, very great atmosphere of open space as well as mixed use, where you have the apartments and condos within a walkable area. It's also inviting. It's also a safe space. And so I think that a combination of all of those things that invites people to come to sort of like engage with one another. So if you look at the way that it's set up, I like the idea of replicating that within the urban villages. And I think that it's something that developers are looking at. If you look at the other sort of like up-and-coming projects for urban villages, is that you can create that space that would be very inviting, walkable, and friendly for people to socialize.
Thank you. We often hear about how tough it is to do business in San Jose. Permits are costly and approval processes take years. Name three things you'd do to create a more business-friendly environment. Let's start with Ms. Comay.
That's a great question because one of the things that I would like to see more of is really inviting these small businesses and being more available. I mean, we have a Department of Economic Development, but I think it's not quite as robust. There are assistance that's provided, but it's not to the depth that it could be. I couldn't even find women-owned businesses or ethnic businesses or other businesses. And we should do much more, as Chappie Jones has done, in terms of building the Business Roundtable, which I think would really, really help to expand businesses, make it easier, and also have departments much more integrated so that getting permits and other business items can be done in a one-stop shop.
And Ms. Snyder?
Hi, I think I answered some of this in my last response, but we do have 60,000 small businesses in San Jose. But we do have these vacant storefronts, and there is a department called the Small Business Ally Department, which helps navigate the steps that are required to open a business. We need to expand this department to assist individuals who do want to open a small business, to help them get through those steps, to get the support they need to thrive in our city. We need to look at the fees and make operating a business in San Jose more enticing than operating a business in another city. And we need to give these businesses more support. We do have a Winchester Boulevard Business Association that we can expand on, and these businesses really are needing our help, especially with COVID. And I've talked to so many businesses lately that have been broken into, and this is not acceptable. We need to support these small businesses.
Thank you. What is the biggest difference between your policy platform and goals and those of your opponent? Let's start with Ms. Snyder.
Well, my goal is I want to make sure that we're running a city as efficiently as possible, that we're running it fiscally conservative with fiscal conservativeness, and that we are being transparent in everything that we do. You know, the residents are paying their tax dollars to receive a certain level of service. They should be getting that. And a lot of residents feel they're not getting that. So my focus is running our city well, and that means only focusing on running our city well and not other issues that sometimes come to the council that don't have to do with running our city. So I just want to keep us on track, keep us in our lane, and do the job we're meant to do, which is to run our city and make it the best city it can be, where people are content, they're happy, and they enjoy living here because they're getting everything that they expect to get from their city council members.
Thank you. Ms. Comay?
Thank you for the question. So one of the things that I have demonstrated through other offices and other work that I've done in my experience has been really looking at outcomes, really looking at accountability as well as transparency in the work that we do at City Hall. And you know, one of the things that I do is I do my homework. I work. I work very hard and I focus on what are our budget priorities and whether or not our budget priorities align with what we're spending on, our results. Are we getting the results? So I think that we really need to focus and focus to the point where it would be transparent to the community, where people would know exactly where the money is coming from, where it's going through, and where it's, what are the results that are going to be as a result of our putting the resources there.
Thank you. One hotly debated issue in San Jose right now is whether undocumented residents should vote in city elections. Do you support this proposal? Why or why not? Let's start with Ms. Kame.
So I've always, I am the daughter of immigrants. My father came from China, my mother from Puerto Rico. My first language is Spanish. And so I know what it's like in terms of being an immigrant. But my father went through the the process of becoming a citizen. And so I think that it is very difficult. I think I am a firm believer of a pathway to citizenship. I do believe that those who have been in our area need the right representation and and all of that. But I really feel that there is a disconnect in terms of being able to grant what others have had to work for, go through in terms of being a citizen in order to vote.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder?
She answered the question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I I think she answered the the question.
All right, so I am not in favor of non-citizens voting. That is my answer to that. The reason I am not in favor is because I feel there's a pathway to citizenship and granting non-citizen voting rights devalues that pathway. The people that go through the pathway are very proud of that achievement because it is a process. It's not an easy process, and it takes time to get there. I also feel that if we were to grant non-citizen voting rights, it would cause a financial burden on the city as we would have to create a completely different ballot for these individuals because they would not be able to vote in any of the other elections that we normally get on our ballot, which is for county and state-level positions as well. So I think that that would not be a wide good use of our tax dollars as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And as mentioned before, you can you can have thirty minutes to respond back. So I don't know if, Ms. Kame, you wanted to use that to to respond? Or if we should just move on to the next question?
So I I thought I responded saying that my my father became a citizen through the regular pathways. And I think that that's the way it should be.
Gotcha. Thank you. So you both mentioned that digital billboards was a vote you wish didn't happen. Can you further elaborate why? And we'll we'll start with Ms. Snyder.
The reason I would have voted against the digital billboards is because the community was adamantly against the digital billboards. And they started their own grassroots organization to push against this. And I support the community in this because they felt so strongly about it. We also had an airport commission that also strongly felt against the billboards. And I know some of those airport commissioners, and I highly respect their opinions. They do their research and they know what's going on. So they also were against the billboards. And lastly, Clear Channel was the ones that was granted the billboards. They already have an inn at the airport, and the city did not go out for two additional RFPs, which in my opinion means that we might be subject to lawsuits for not following protocol. That's why I'm again, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Kame?
So on the digital billboards, you know, perhaps at some point, you know, the the council may have had some information that I didn't quite get. But but from what I can read and what I can see, the digital billboard to me is a higher safety issue than than anything else. I do know that there was a lot of information, a lot of residents who did not want to see the billboard, the the digital billboards. And and I do worry about safety. I do worry about distractions. I do worry that, you know, at any moment, someone would, you know, sort of like glance away from where they're driving and and something would happen. So I guess I wasn't convinced that it was something that was fine. I I just am much more concerned about whether or not it would have been more of a safety issue than anything else.
Thank you. And that wraps up our questions. We'll move on to closing statements, and we'll start with Ms. Kame.
Thank you. I've been a longtime community member and have been engaged in the business area, government, and nonprofit sectors to really improve the quality of life of our community. I will listen, I will learn, I will lead and act towards solutions in the mounting problems that San Jose has by working collaboratively. I think that's something that I've always done and throughout my life. And I look forward to engaging and working with the residents to improve outcomes for the community. And if you want to contact me, please contact me at RosemaryKame.org. And I hope that I'm able to get your support and your vote.
Thank you. And Ms. Snyder?
I'm not a career elected official. I'm a community leader who generally wants to serve the residents of West San Jose where I grew up. I have no aspirations for higher office and no agenda other than to serve the residents of my district and serve them well by being responsive to their calls, emails, and concerns. I will focus on making sure residents are receiving the core city services they are entitled to while being fiscally responsible with their tax dollars. The support I have received from the community leaders and businesses in my district has been the reason I entered this race. You, the devotee, the voters, decide who you want to represent you. Throughout my campaign, I have been transparent with my thoughts and how I would have voted on recent council items and given reasons why I would have voted that way. If you live in District One, I would be honored to have your vote. I want San Jose to be the city that is safest, cleanest, and most vibrant, a place where people of all income levels. I didn't get a full minute.
Oh, we
Thirty seconds?
Yeah.
All right, well, my website is RamonaSnyder.com, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you both so much for joining us. We're going to move on to our next panel. I would like to welcome the candidates for San Jose Council District Three, which includes Downtown, the Luna Park, Japantown, Spartan Keys, and Guadalupe, Washington neighborhoods. The current representative of District Three, Councilmember Raul Paralas, is terming out this year. The candidates include San Jose Evergreen Community College District Trustee Omar Torres, Irene Smith, Elizabeth Chen Hale, Ivan Torres, and Joanna Rowe. And I can see that we're still promoting them to panelists. Just give us a minute. Awesome. Thank you all for being here. So we're going, we're going to start with opening statements, and we'll start with Mr. Omar Torres.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar Torres. I serve on the San Jose Evergreen Community College District Board of Trustees, and I come from the Guadalupe, Washington neighborhood of District Three. And for over for over twenty-five years, I've been involved in my community in different capacities, both as a neighborhood organizer, a former educator, a nonprofit executive, a City Hall employee, and now as a small business advocate. I love San Jose. I love District Three. And it is my real-life experiences and challenges on why I'm running for San Jose City Council District Three. I grew up in a very, very challenging neighborhood where many of us couldn't even cross the street to attend Washington Elementary School because it was then the first Highway Eighty-seven. I have experience on making sure that we are housing our unhoused, that we are cleaning up our neighborhoods, and that we have community engagement in District Three. I have done that for over twenty-five years, and I'm ready to tackle many of the challenges that our city of San Jose has to make it beautiful and vibrant once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Ms. Smith. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Hi, we all know that change is incredibly difficult. And the status quo, that's pretty easy. We agree in downtown San Jose that we need to change, and we need that change right now. Increasing encampments, crime, and blight, it's not defensible, and it's not sustainable. My request to everyone here is to hold each one of us accountable. Demand to hear our details of our plans. Don't be satisfied with empty talk that just merely kicks the can down Santa Clara Street. My diverse professions, as a pro temp judge, a mental health counselor, a small business owner, and a housing provider, all of these things tell you one thing about me: I am eager for change. And you deserve change, authentic, genuine, and visibly dramatic change in downtown D-three.
Thank you. Ms. Chen Hale?
Thank you, Spotlight, and everyone attending this Zoom meeting for giving me the opportunity to tell you why I'm running for a seat on the San Jose City Council. I am the only immigrant candidate in this group. I came at age thirteen to the US with my family in search of the American dream. My early days, I worked very hard in a variety of odd jobs to support myself, and I focused on education. Through good public school education, I landed in the high-tech sector, where I stayed for the past decades, both as an engineer and as legal counsel. Since moving to San Jose, I've been heavily involved in community work. As the president of San Jose Downtown Resident Association, I engage and inform the downtown residents on issues such as transportation, homelessness, recycling, and redistricting. I also sat on appeals hearing board, hearing cases relating to safety and blight. I'm running to share and make real the six central parts of my American dream with other D-three candidates. My vision is a clean, safe, diverse city where every group feels
Thank you. Mr. Ivan Torres?
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Ivan Torres. I'm born and raised in San Jose, a lifelong District Three resident. For many years, the interests of working people have been sold off to interests like the luxury real estate developers, the private equity groups. And as a result, the cost of living has increased. Our rents keep going up, and our wages were stagnant. In a district that is so diverse, meaningful, clearly complex, and undeniably working class, I am ready to be the working-class champion.
Thank you. And Ms. Rowe?
Hi, everyone, and hello to my fellow candidates. And thank you, San Jose Spotlight. My name is Joanna Rowe. I'm running to be the next council member for District Three because I'm a working mom who wants to raise happy kids in a clean, safe, and fun San Jose like I enjoyed as a kid. I'm an attorney. I've been a professional negotiator for the last fifteen years. It's my job to bring people and organizations together to overcome differences, to solve complicated problems. I'm not a professional politician. I don't have entrenched or extreme views. I'm not interested in fighting, I'm interested in solutions. I've been endorsed by the San Jose Police Officers Association, the League of Conservation Voters of Santa Clara County, by Mayor Locardo, former Mayor Tom McHenry, as well as a variety of other local business and community leaders because they know that I care about finding solutions. I'll bring my negotiating expertise to City Hall so we can address the biggest issues facing our district: homelessness, trash, public safety, and affordability. I'm the only candidate with the proven skills to get everyone to stop pulling in different directions and start working together. We can do better, and together, we can get this job done.
Thank you. And let's get into the questions. What is one thing that sets you apart from your colleagues running for this downtown council council seat? Let's start with Ms. Smith.
Yeah, let's see, I'm off mute. Great, thank you. I think that there are several things that set me apart, and it really stems from my experience. I have run a small business in downtown. I have my mediation and negotiation firm that I've had for thirty-three years, and I've also managed property for over thirty-three years. And in addition to that, I've been a pro temp judge for fifteen years and an administrative hearing officer. Along with that, I worked in a mental health facility for children in a hospital that had severe mental illness. So I can really see what's happening out on their streets in in D-three. And then I also worked at IBM for about two twenty years. And yet I can understand all the complexities of organizations and and how everything is put together and how we can come together and get solutions to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Chen Hale?
I think what sets me apart is to echo my last statement that I want to build San Jose into a clean, safe, diverse city where every group feels welcome. And that needs to be supported by a growing and vibrant economy in D-three and beyond. So there are many restaurants and small stores run by San Jose, by locals. Many of them suffered greatly during the pandemic. We need to continue our efforts to allow small business owners to flourish and make a comfortable living. We need to help them with city guidance, consulting, and grants. This is not where we stop. We need to actively bring in companies that can increase city revenues and bring good jobs for San Jose residents. This can help to balance out our budget with additional resources to for issues such as homelessness, traffic, and community. Now, we are fortunate to have San Jose State, the talent pool, which is a proven magnet for companies to come. Google is the first example, and it's only the beginning. The city needs a partner with San Jose State to develop a next generation of towns for San Jose.
Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Ivan Torres.
So basically, what sets me apart is the fact that my campaign is centered around addressing economic inequalities in San Jose. As time goes on, things are not getting easier for many of us, including the working folks in San Jose. Our rents are going up. Opportunity is diminishing. We really want to expose what is attributable to mental health prices, to homelessness, to inflation. And we have sustainable solutions ranging from tuition-free college to public housing to address all the issues.
Yeah, thank you. We're just having a little bit difficulty hearing you as well. I heard you, but I I saw someone say that they they didn't. So just so, so you know. Let's go to Ms. Rowe.
Well, my family came to San Jose over a hundred years ago. I'm a working mom here with three small kids, so I want to grow up in the same great city I enjoyed as a kid. And I'm the only candidate who has a proven record of fifteen years of becoming a negotiating expert that I can use to stop our city leaders from pulling in opposite directions and start getting us all pulling in the same direction so we can create a safe, clean, and fun San Jose for all of our families to enjoy.
Thank you. And Mr. Omar Torres?
Good evening. My record is unmatched. For over fourteen years, I have been at the ground making sure that our folks are not being displaced, that our communities are safe, and that we have a seat at the table. I I take pride in the record that I have. Crosswalks, stoplights, open spaces, parks, a youth center, a library, a community center, a resource center for the unhoused, cleaning up unhousing, unhoused encampments in sensitive areas. I I have always rolled up my sleeve for my community and will continue to do so as your council member. I I take this job seriously, not only from a my volunteer perspective, but as a but as a professional at City Hall. I have done many of the things that we're talking about, and I'm going to offer solutions to these to these issues.
Thank you. Last week, San Jose police officers, or about last two weeks ago, San Jose police officers shot an armed twenty-year-old man after a fight broke out in downtown, in a downtown Mexican restaurant. The man's attorney says he was protecting himself and others from a gunman during the fight. He had disarmed them. What can be done to reduce officer-involved shootings and hold officers accountable from excess use of force? Let's start with Ms. Chen Hale.
Well, it was a very sad incident in the wave of gun violence and the problems with police handling gun violence. I'm very sorry to see that happening again. But my solution would be, we are short-staffed in the police department. So and the San Jose city budget already committed to adding more police officers. And so this is going to go forward. But I think even more important, adding more and the money. And it will be the training and the environment, which will allow the police officers to stay happy, well-trained, and be ready for all sides, well, types of serious to stay happy, well-trained and be ready for all types of serious situations. I think this happened because the police force is probably more focused on violence crime and they're more likely to respond in such a way. I believe that more training and supplementation from the departments such as mental health experts or social services will ease the situation.
Thank you. Mr. Ivan Torres.
Sure. So that's an interesting question because my campaign is already centered around police reform in San Jose. I do believe that our officers need extra training on how to handle diffuse certain situations. I think the police department needs to essentially have more accountability and transparency. And I think that community trust with police department is at an all-time low.
Thank you. Ms. Rao.
Sure. I want to begin by saying that this event was an absolute tragedy. Based on what we know so far, it appears that Kwan Green wrestled a gun away from somebody who brought it to a restaurant. There's an ongoing investigation. We don't have all the facts, but what we do know is that this incident involved what's called a ghost gun, which is a gun that's not traceable and can be purchased online or even printed at home on a 3D printer. And we need to get these guns off the streets, period. I echo what my fellow candidate said, that we do have to invest in training. We do have to invest in additional officers. We need to make sure that our officers are members of the community that they serve and we should be investing in community policing. Right now, our officers are spending a third of their calls, addressing calls related to homelessness. And we want to be sure that we're investing in resources to address the homelessness problem so our police can get back to becoming members of the community that they serve.
Thank you. Mr. Omar Torres.
Yes, it's a very unfortunate incident that happened. And we definitely need to make sure that our police officers are well-trained, that they are trained in the de-escalation process, that the community comes first for them. That's extremely important. For the community to hold trust in our San Jose Police Department, well, the police department needs to hold trust in our community as well. It's very unfortunate that many in our community, like our unhoused, our immigrant community, our other folks of color, our LGBTQ community do not have faith in our police department. And we need to continue to work together to make sure that we do because without our police department, we do not have safe communities. However, I do also support accountability and we need to make sure that our officers are being held accountable when situations like this happen.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I echo everyone's concern here that this was a tragedy. And I also support Kennedy Torres' statement that we really have to focus on our communication skills and our outreach to a wide variety of communities so that everyone has input and can help structure the police department's response. As an administrative hearing officer for Santa Clara County, I really do understand the law and the reasons that we have laws and the implementation of laws and how important it is to keep those enforced. I think crime is a major problem for us in downtown D three and we need to be able to equip our officers better. We need to have the MCAT police solidified as not a pilot program, but as a mental health component of the police response.
Thank you. For decades, San Jose leaders have been talking about revitalizing downtown. It seems like things have only gotten worse with vacant storefronts, blight and homelessness. Why can't we attract retailers like the ones that closed such as Safeway and Ross? And how do we finally repair and revitalize downtown? Let's start with Mr. Ivan Torres.
Sure. One of the ways that we can revitalize downtown is essentially making, I mean, something as simple as parking in downtown. If you park in downtown, you understand that it's a very difficult place to find parking. They charge for parking. So one of the ideas that community people have been talking about is free parking. And we have to make things accessible for patrons to come into downtown. Safety is also another issue. A lot of people do not feel safe in District Three, especially the core of downtown. So a lot, and we have that as well. And so a lot of those things really contribute to the fact that people don't feel safe. People find it inconvenient and it makes it very difficult for businesses to thrive.
Thank you. Ms. Rao.
Thank you. Revitalization, I think, is a really visible way of encapsulating all of the challenges that our city is facing right now. And as we see the city resolve some of these bigger issues, we see it becoming more vibrant. So I think key to making sure that our city can achieve, can achieve all that it deserves to in terms of vibrancy and small business. First and foremost, we really do have to address our homelessness crisis in order for business owners to be able to open their doors, make sure people feel comfortable being out and about in our public spaces, frequenting businesses, giving people the opportunity to open new businesses. We do need to make sure that we have short-term and long-term solutions to the homelessness crisis. That includes, in the immediate term, getting more shelter beds available, being more efficient with the resources that we currently have. There are shelter beds that go empty every night because our providers can't communicate real time.
Thank you. Mr. Omar Torres.
Currently, I'm the Business Resiliency Manager for the San Jose Downtown Association. And this amazing organization makes sure that we have the tools and resources to create vibrant downtown. And we've been doing that. Even though we have not fully recovered from COVID-19 and we have a unhoused challenge in our downtown, folks with dreams and a vision want to invest in our downtown and will continue to do so. We need to make sure that our planning department is fully staffed. Currently, we're at a twenty-seven percent vacancy rate. It is the planning department that helps businesses get off the ground. Once we fully staff this department, I'm going to make sure that we have a one-stop shop that cuts through the red tape to make sure businesses are able to open almost immediately. Even before working for the San Jose Downtown Association as a neighborhood leader and City Hall employee, I've always helped local businesses start and grow. I'm the only candidate who has been on the ground to make sure that we have a thriving business community here in the city of San Jose.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you. I have been a small business owner for thirty-three years. I started my mediation firm in downtown and I started my property management firm in downtown. I've cut payroll checks and I've balanced budgets and done income statements. But small businesses in our downtown core and throughout D three are being boarded up and they're not being successful in any way. We're not giving them the support that they need. We need to make downtown the gem of all of San Jose and expand that throughout D three. And the basis of that is going to be clean and safe. Businesses won't survive unless it's clean. If it's safe, we can either do the foot patrols, we can actually use community policing. And most importantly, families. Families are the backbone of small businesses and we need to be able to attract families and then they can help start more small businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Chen He. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you for that question. I live in a downtown core, so I see the deteriorating situation in downtown every day. It pains me a lot. I moved to downtown more than a decade ago when I see was definitely on the uprise and the pandemic has set us back greatly. But this is really also an opportunity to rethink. I think I echo a lot of problems and fellow candidates mentioned. Downtown so far is not a welcoming community. People feel like it's not safe. We need to make a clean, safe, right. We probably need to, for businesses to get together and patrol the area ourselves to make it a welcome place. But more importantly, we also have, we have not defined downtown business very well. We have Japan Towne to the north, Santana Road to the west. They're all taking kind of our business away. So I think the business leaders in downtown need to get together, really think about it and see how do we want to rebuild downtown? Because we have the opportunity now.
Thank you. We have a question from an audience member, Jeffrey Levin. We'll keep this one short. But he asks, are any of the D three candidates running a corporate-free campaign? And we will start with Ms. Rao.
Can we get clarity on what we mean by a corporate-free campaign? What does that mean?
Sure. Well, let's ask Jeffrey what he particularly means about that. What I think he means, though, is free of corporate, yeah, and he just said free of corporate donations.
I have not accepted any corporate donations to date. Obviously, our businesses, our members are our community. As the last question goes to this issue predominantly, we do want to have a vibrant, thriving downtown. And that means making it a place, as candidate Torres pointed out, where businesses can open and thrive. So I don't know that it would benefit the campaign to shut those voices out. And that said, I can't say that I've received any corporate donations to date.
Mr. Omar Torres.
Absolutely. I'm beholden to my community, not corporate America, not local corporations here in the city of San Jose. I'm beholden to the working class here in the city of San Jose. So that's who I'm going to represent, the people, not corporations.
Ms. Smith.
I am a complete independent. At age eighteen, I started voting independently and that's the way it's remained ever since. And I think that I have not received any corporate sponsorship, but I want to leave the door open to talk to everyone, to collaborate with big business, especially with small business and a wide, diverse community so that we can get better, more robust solutions. So I won't exclude corporations from the table in order to discuss with them what they need to make San Jose more vibrant and especially D three.
Thank you. Ms. Chen He.
I think I'm a truly independent candidate. I'm undeclared with respect to political party. I'm the centrist in my views. I think for that reason, I have not gathered any endorsement by any particular group because I refuse to toe the party line and I want to be an independent voice if I'm elected to City Hall. I'm here because of my community services. I started doing this because I'm here to serve the downtown residents. By running for San Jose City Council, I'm trying to expand my services and devotion and love for the community to the entire D three. Because of that, I think I'm the right candidate. I should be able to form lasting partnerships because I do not come with any past relationships and I should be able to propose new solutions and look things from a very fresh perspective.
And Mr. Ivan Torres.
Sure. Yeah, we are absolutely corporate-free. We are one hundred percent people-funded and reject all corporate cash. So that is important because essentially, if you are one hundred percent people-funded, it allows you to be effective in serving your community. And that's essentially the biggest reason or most important reason why we did that. Probably one hundred percent people-funded.
Thank you. And because we are running short on time, this will be the last question. And we'll not do closing statements. But so Columbus Park in District Three has become the largest homeless encampment in the city. We've heard from many business leaders that homelessness continues to be a deterrent for growth in your district despite the fact that it's home to the most low-income housing. What would you do differently from the current city council to get people off the streets and keep them housed? And let's start with Mr. Omar Torres.
Well, I will definitely work with our county to make sure that we are housing them with Measure A monies. That's extremely important. We need to put our folks into housing instead of them being in our rivers and in our parks. This is important for the vibrancy or city of San Jose. We need to continue to collaborate with our state and our county to make sure that our houses are unhoused.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I've been a housing provider and a housing expert for over thirty-three years and that's helped me form my plan for housing success. A step-by-step approach, which I call the incremental ladder of housing success, where we are moving folks and meeting them in tents while we wait for housing to be built. I also want to keep families housed and create a rental voucher program similar to Section Eight, but we can do it better and faster. And finally, also creating housing much faster by streamlining the procurement process.
Thank you. Ms. Chen He.
Well, this is a very complicated problem. I don't know if I can explain well in thirty seconds, but I'll try. So homelessness is a multifaceted problem, standing for high cost of housing, mental illness, addictions and other things, and also requires multiple parties, at least a county, the city and maybe the state. My approach will be to first identify the problem, who, where and why, and then to contain the problem, zero tolerance for having any more residents falling into homelessness. Then we won't count intermediate and long-term solutions to house residents.
Thank you. Mr. Ivan Torres.
Sure. So one of the plans that we have is public housing. Like candidate Smith said, it's similar to Section Eight housing with funding, but the difference is that Section Eight housing and low-income housing are often still regulated and operated by private landlords. And that is an automatic conflict of interest. So aside from public housing, we also have ideas on implementing rent control. We have to control people's rent. If your rent skyrockets, that's an automatic displacement for you and that's not what we want for the people of San Jose.
Thank you. And Ms. Rao.
I echo homelessness is a complicated problem. It deserves our respect and acknowledgement that the solutions are also going to be complicated. We need short-term solutions and we need long-term solutions in the short term. We need to be more efficient with the resources that we currently have. There are shelter beds that go empty every night. There are churches with beds going empty because they don't have volunteers to manage the night shift. These are problems we can fix. It should be as easy to book a shelter bed in San Jose as it is to book an Airbnb. We also need to build more shelter throughout the city as quickly as possible. We've done it in the past. We can do it again. We did it during the floods in 2017. We did it during COVID. We can do this.
Thank you. And thank you all so much for joining us. We are now going to move on to our next panel. And our third panel of the evening, San Jose City Council, District Five, which includes East San Jose, specifically the Alum Rock, Mayfair, Lyndale and Plata Arayo neighborhoods. Councilmember Magdalena Carrasco, who represents District Five, is terming out at the end of the year. The candidates are former California Assembly Member Nora Campos, Alum Rock Union School District President Andres Quintero, Santa Clara County Board of Education President Peter Ortiz, San Jose Planning Commission Chair Rolando Bonilla and H.G. Nguyen. And just give us a second to get them all up here.
Dana, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. All right, just waiting on two more. Awesome. Great. So I see everybody is here. And so let's start with opening statements and we'll start with Ms. Campos.
Thank you for allowing me to be here and have an opportunity to share my vision with the community. I'm running for San Jose City Council to put policies forward that will grow the middle class so that they can thrive here in the city of San Jose and policies that we can move forward that support the working-class community in East San Jose. Policies that will make sure that they can support their families with one job. Imagine a community with affordable housing, healthcare. transportation that connects you to your job, and public safety. We can walk out your front door and visit your neighbor or your neighboring park. That's the community I want to live in, and I hope that's the community you want to live in. And make sure that our city facilities are fully staffed, as well as the departments, so that they can address the issues that need to be addressed when you call them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero?
Hello, my name is Andres Quintero. I'm president of the Alum Rock School Board. I'm a lifelong resident of East San Jose. I'm the son of immigrant parents who left Mexico to find a better life for their children here. And they made their home in, in San Jose's Barros Santi Pues, or in English, known as Get Out If You Can. I have had the privilege to serve the people of East San Jose on the Alum Rock School Board since 2012. As a member of the Alum Rock School Board, we faced significant difficulties, there were significant challenges. And during those times, it was tough. I'm very proud to have the, the, to place the people of East San Jose first as a priority. And it's because of that, that I count on the support of a wide array of individuals that have lent support to my candidacy, which include District Attorney Jeff Rosen, Supervisor Cindy Chavez, Supervisor Ellen Berg, as well as Councilmember Maya Sparza. It's a privilege for me to run, to represent my community. I intend to bring forward common sense solutions that will address public safety, quality of life issues, as well as the housing crisis. I'll bring trusted, proven leadership that will ensure we make East San Jose safe and secure.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz?
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you all today. My name is Peter Ortiz, and I'm currently the president of the Santa Clara County Board of Education. I want to thank Spotlight for this opportunity to share about myself and my candidacy for City Council. Our campaign for San Jose City Council is rooted in economic justice for the families of East San Jose, and is calling for a people-first economic package that will focus on investing in public safety of local residents, allocating resources to address our broken roads and blighted neighborhoods, and the activation and beautification of our major business corridors so we can build a thriving economy. I'm not a typical politician, and I'm not running a typical campaign. All these issues are important to me because I have experience working in this community to address them. And I want to work hand in hand with the residents of this district to identify solutions to the problems in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonilla?
Yeah, how are you? Good evening, everyone. My name is Rolando Bonilla. You know, for over forty years, this community has been the epicenter of being forgotten by San Jose City Hall from the increase in crime, blight, lack of access to resources. My opponents will tell you to judge them on their record. I beg you, please judge them on their record. Because if their record was as they say that it is, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in from an increase in crime, from an increase in terms of lack of resources, and candidly, from not, from, from a city council that does not understand that East San Jose is a part of the city as a whole. I'm not a politician. I'm the father of three children I'm raising here in this community. And I'm doing this because, like many of you, we are tired of being neglected, tired of being forgotten. When you elect me to the San Jose City Council, you'll elect someone that not only has a vested interest, but actually has the skills and actually has the understanding to get things done for our community. The politics of the past are over. We must now move into the future with new direction.
Thank you. And Ms. Nguyen? Oh, you're muted.
H.G., you're on, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
H.G.?
Thank you so much. Can you hear me now? Thank you. So, good evening, everybody. I'm here because I'm running for District Five. I'm running for District Five because I want to revitalize District Five. I think the main issue that we have in District Five is that we forgot the basis of humanity is people. We don't take care of each other. We forgot our family members. We focus on something that I think is official. So I'm running, I want to bring innovation to City Hall, new ways of doing business during my first one hundred days as an example of innovation. I want to make sure that I can work with my constituents to convince City Hall to institute a family appreciation holiday for all of the employees working in the City Hall. And that I will, if I have more time, I will explain more. And you know, the investment even.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. All right, let's get into the questions. Despite the city's push for equity and inclusion, East San Jose continues to be disproportionately affected by the most serious problems. COVID killed and infected more people here. Police officers respond to more calls in East San Jose in, in their schools, and the digital divide plagues our students and widens the wealth gap. How would you ensure East San Jose gets the support and public resources it deserves? Let's start with Mr. Quintero.
Thank you. I'm proud of the work that I've done to begin to address that. And it was tough. It was a tough, a tough situation. We, I worked on the city council that she was staffed to Councilmember Maya Sparza. And it was some serious conversations that we had to work to initiate. And so I'm proud of the work that she did. Proud to have been able to support her to initiate, to initiate that conversation. With regard to the inequity that we live, I'm going to build upon the thing that we've already done. At Alum Rock, we were able to provide a device for each student. We were able to provide internet connectivity. And so it's that track record that I bring forward, not just a lot of talk and plans, but actions. Actions that have brought forward six point five million meals. Students and two residents in general of East San Jose who needed a meal right there at our Alum Rock schools. And so those are the types of things, partnerships, relationships that we've been able to establish at Alum Rock as a school district. I intend to amplify that and, and, and build upon that when I get onto the City Council.
Thank you. Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you so much for this question. You know, the no response by any city was perfect. But to be honest, I'm proud of our county and our city's response to COVID nineteen. It's easy to stand on the sidelines and critique the actions of those in leadership. That's why when the pandemic struck, I made the decision to roll up my sleeves and be a part of this solution. As the only candidate that served on the joint city and county COVID nineteen Health and National Equity Task Force, I was able to have a direct hands-on involvement in District Five's recovery during the pandemic, including ensuring that vaccines and vaccination sites were allocated in a way that was accessible to East San Jose families and advocating for COVID nineteen PPE resource set testing centers to be centered in District Five hotspots. As District Five recovers, it's essential that we prioritize developing an equity-focused plan that prioritizes our most vulnerable populations. I'm the candidate to implement that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bonilla?
Yeah, you know, that's a whole lot of nothing. I think what people wanted in the pandemic was solutions, dollars, immediate cash injection, immediate access to vaccine, not meetings and task force and meetings and task force. What did I do? Still on twenty-four hour oxygen. I raised over $200,000 to put money directly into people's pockets. I put my own dollars into that to start the fund. Nothing prevented my opponents from doing that. They're all big names, big titles. But you know, those titles don't mean anything if you don't actually do something with it. $200,000. And to this day, those businesses that are getting all that great information about how to access resources still do not have resources, still do not have access to capital, are still having people who are unemployed. Doors are closing. So while they're all having conversations about task forces, I was putting money into people's pockets because at the end of the day, let's get real. That's what this district needs, someone that understands how to inject capital in order to make this district thrive. Task forces, assembly committees, that's nothing. That's a waste of time, and that's why this district is in the position that it's in today.
Thank you.
I'd like the opportunity to respond.
Sure, let's do it thirty seconds.
So I want to be, uh, you know, clear to the commissioner. I'm proud of the East San Jose Rescue Plan and the work I've done in partnership with the city. It's easy to hold press conferences.
You didn't do anything, Pete. You didn't do anything. You didn't do anything, Pete.
You're not gonna bully me.
How much money?
Mr. Bonilla.
Boy.
Mr. Bonilla, I'm not your ex-wife. You can't bully.
This is you, Peter. This is you, Peter. This is you, Peter. This is you, Peter. Back it up, homie. Back it up.
Yeah, no, I'm not your ex-wife. You're not going to strangle.
Peter, there it is. There it is, Peter. That's you.
All right.
I don't want to participate in it. So if you please can keep order, then I'll continue, but I'm not interested in engaging in this type of.
Yeah, the community wants to hear our issues.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So let's let everyone have the time allotted for them. One sec, can I, can I just please talk for a second? Thank you. So, yeah, let's, let's do that. I know, Peter, Mr. Ortiz, you did not get your thirty seconds. We'll do that. But we cannot have, you know, interruptions or anything like that. And I tried to interrupt this several times and it didn't work. So let's do the thirty seconds again, and then we're going to move on to Ms. Nguyen.
Yep, I, I want to be, you know, I want to be clear. I'm proud of the East San Jose Rescue Plan and the, and the work I've done in partnership with the city. You know, it's easy to stand on the sidelines and critique the efforts and hard work of others. It's a lot harder to work in partnership with those who are local representatives and propose solutions to the problems facing our district. The fact is, I was at the table advocating for our most vulnerable populations to receive resources and services. And I did that without any press releases. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Nguyen? Oh, you're muted again. You're, you're still on mute, Ms. Nguyen.
Okay, thank you. So for me, I realized that in my district, we need to do a lot of things differently. For COVID nineteen, I realized that a lot of my folks couldn't receive the information they needed to. And so I would like to have a more proactive way to distribute information to my constituents and making sure that we go to each neighborhood group and explain to the people instead of doing things online. And a lot of people don't have computers. A lot of people don't know how to get online. So in order to solve the public safety issue with COVID nineteen, I think we have to be more proactive. And I would like to say that, you know, if we, again, invest in our family, all of these issues can be taken care of. And later on, I would like to have one minute to expand about my family appreciation holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campos?
Thank you. When I was on the City Council, if you're familiar with Story and King, I was able to move that forward and get an investment of public-private partnership of a hundred million dollars. And we brought Target, we brought four financial institutions. We hadn't had financial institutions there in thirty years. That's the investment when we talk about equity. Our community did not have that. And around COVID, I, you know, like everyone, it happened. The schools shut down. I worked with the county. I worked with the Mexican Heritage and Gardener Center to actually bring the first real tangible testing site to the Mexican Heritage Plaza, where we were able to create an infrastructure that just moved quickly. And then what was really phenomenal is that from the testing site, it went into the vaccine site. The one thing about our community that I think everyone did not understand is that they needed the ability to just be able to walk up, not go online and have to get an appointment. That's how you work with the community.
Thank you. As areas in East San Jose, such as the Alum Rock Corridor, see potential development, we also lose a lot of local Latina-owned businesses. What can be done to support and save small family-owned businesses in East San Jose? Let's start with Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you so much for this question. So as a longtime supporter of District Five small businesses, and I'm proud of my strong track record of advocating for the merchants of East San Jose, especially in Alum Rock. You know, the city has traditionally had advocates for big business, but I plan to dedicate my resources and time to support the needs of our mom-and-pop shops along our major corridors. And my office will utilize our resources to uplift the voices of our local business community. When I like, when elected, I will continue to fund culturally competent small business outreach programs like those created by the East San Jose Rescue Plan to provide direct guidance and to support to merchants and vendors. I will also prioritize funding our community grants focused on storefront revitalizations to activate our corridors and to bring new customers to our area, as well as to introduce anti-displacement policies to prevent the upheaval of our immigrant and cultural small businesses in East San Jose.
Thank you. Mr. Bonilla? Oh, you're muted.
I've been very clear this past year that we have to take a three-step approach. Step one, undoubtedly, we have to increase the police budget. We can't expect businesses to thrive in our community if people don't feel safe. Step two, I've been also very clear that the city of San Jose needs a minimum thirty million dollar economic plan. I did that in February of 2021. That's when I began that campaign to get those funds, those dollars in. And part of that plan requires that the city of San Jose purchase and or lease the vacant storefronts along Alum Rock. Story, in fact, you look at buildings, for example, across the street from Mexican Heritage Plaza, the Alum Rock Corridor. There's a lot of emptiness. The city can easily inject capital in terms of buying those assets, you turning those assets around and creating business opportunities, brick and mortar opportunities for folks that are trying to get into the business world. By doing that, it's a no-lose proposition for the city because you also now hold an asset that's gaining in value. So it's a win-win, and you can then turn that, that equity reinvested back into doing that throughout the district in order to ensure that mom-and-pops then have the vibrancy in the space by which to do business along the corridor. But you can't do it without people feeling safe and more police presence.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen?
Yes, this is a very good idea for me to run for District Five because, you know, my child is small business woman. And I founded Vietnamese-American Tema Commerce when Nora was trying to run for City Council at the time. So I was able to help relocate more and one hundred small business people on East Santa Clara Street to house our current city hall right now. And those businesses are now flourishing across City Hall, the city of San Jose. With that experience and the back now as a business person, I love to work with all of the businesses that are empty in our district, revitalize it, prosper it, and make sure that we will have a vibrant business community. And the local people will come and support the local business people. That's my intention and active innovation to help revitalize our district size.
Thank you. Ms. Campos?
Thank you for this question. You know, I've been working with the small businesses for many years, and we revitalized the village, Alum Rock Village, Alum Rock, where it's closer to the 101, and like I said, Story and King. The one thing that we're overlooking is that the, the city of San Jose received COVID money that has no, that has very few restrictions on it. And we need to be able to look at that money and how we can take some of that money to invest it in our small businesses because they did take the biggest hit during the pandemic. So I will continue to be able to move forward on that when I'm on the City Council. And also, the other thing that we need to know is that when the small business needs resources, we should be dedicating to staff people that can actually work with them, get them through the paperwork that can be complicated so that they can get the funding that they need from the state and the federal so that they can be able to move forward. And we need to increase our police department to be able to patrol our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Quintero?
Safe and security, San Jose says, what I've been talking about from the get-go. The conversations I've had with small businesses, forty which have already lent their support to my candidacy, have been along the lines of, I've moved in here a couple of months, and I've already been broken into three times. Another instance is across the way, an individual was living on a roof, living on a roof, nearly building, burning down the entire place because they were cooking on top of there. These things can't happen. We can go ahead and revitalize it. We're going to continue to have these issues because of public safety. We're going to continue to have problems that already exist. And so I, it's my intention to ensure that as we revitalize, we make sure that we are increasing our budget for public safety. We're directing the resources and that we ensure that we leverage any and every opportunity we have in the city to recognize the value, the investment that those small businesses that are already there have made, and that they already made a down payment towards those new developments, and that we ensure that they have a place of first priority to make a spot in that new development, wherever it may be.
Thank you. We recently wrote about how residents are fleeing San Jose in staggering numbers. How would you improve the quality of life for people in East San Jose? And let's start with Mr. Bonilla.
Well, I go back to public safety. You know, I will back to the fact that two of my opponents here have been very clear in terms of voting to defund police officers. We cannot speak out of both sides of our mouth when it's cool to say defund the police, and when it's not cool, say that we need more police officers. I've been consistent on this topic. I've been consistent on this topic. We can't grow our community. We can't encourage people to stay here in our community unless they feel safe, period. So what we need, as I've said before, is we need a police precinct here in East San Jose. We're about a hundred and ten thousand people. We are the size of most Bay Area cities, and yet we don't have police infrastructure right here in the heart of our community. When we do that, you're going to encourage people to want to stay. You're going to also help the community thrive. But but let's be very clear, right? My my opponents have been very clear and they have voted to defund police officers. We have to be consistent on these topics because that's what gets this community in trouble. You can't dance back and forth when it's cool, not cool. I've been consistent from day one. Public safety is the way to keep people in and help our community thrive.
Like to rebut.
Sure, why why don't we go through everyone's answers? Or actually, no, it's okay. Go ahead for thirty seconds.
Let me know when to start.
Go ahead.
All right, um so it's easy to make these uh pronouncements as an advisory individual. It's never actually made it a decision of consequence. The fact of the matter is that school districts are not budgeted for police forces. It is unfair. It is not right to go and double tax residents who already pay for police through the tax dollars that they send when they send their children to our schools. My intention is to ensure that our children get the services that they deserve through the budget. The city is budgeted for public safety. And intend to make sure that we go ahead and we put the resources that are necessary to help our schools directly to the city budget.
Thank, thank you. Um. All right, let's go to Ms Nguyen.
Well, I'd like to rebut too because I'm the other individual who he was mentioning.
Sure, thirty seconds, please.
So uh, you know, I'm I'm proud of my long track record in advocacy uh in public office. That being said, facts matter. You know, I've advocated for racial and social justice policies in the past as well as uh oversight uh to law enforcement. Uh but let the record show that I've never advocated to defund the police, nor have I voted to do so. You will not find a vote on the Santa Clara County Board of Education records that says that I have voted to defund the police. So falsehood, and I want to make sure that the record says that.
I'd like to, I'd like to rebut that, Jada.
Sure.
June twenty-second, Peter Ortiz let the charge to remove police officers from East Side, uh the East Side School District. April sixth, twenty twenty-one, you literally wrote an op-ed that begins that the main thesis is to defund the police. June twenty twenty-one, you let the charge to remove the San Jose Police Department from San Jose Unified. Let the record reflect.
All right.
I said vote. I said I never.
Would would you like to use the the last of your?
Uh a- absolutely, right? I I said that I I I agree with uh uh my fellow colleague who's running on the Esking Teno. Our schools are underfunded. Right? We don't, we have schools that don't even have counselors or counselors that are split split between five different schools, right? Our after-school slots are limited, right? Uh our infrastructure is crumbling, especially in East San Jose uh 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 schools. Our dollars, right, are are supposed to be dedicated to the education of our children. Uh this isn't the the funding or the removal of police from our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to rebut or can we?
It's my turn, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Um so thank you very much for the question. Uh for me, I've always had a good hooky relationship with police department. Actually, in uh District Seven and Four that I used to work with, I was able to work with the police department hand in hand, and we solved a lot of crimes, especially on Story Road Corridor. So I think in my country, Vietnam, you know, we always believe that police offense of the citizens. So if we work hand in hand to protect our district, our neighborhoods, our community with the police is no one, no problem is a big problem, but we have to work together. City Hall cannot do it by itself. I cannot do it by myself. The community cannot do it by itself. So we have to work together, and I believe in police department. I believe believe in police officers to make sure we have, you know, quality of life in District Five.
Thank you, Ms Nguyen. Um Ms Campos?
Thank you for the question. This is an important issue. When I was on the city council, we were the safest big city in America. When I left in two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-two, we've lost over two hundred and seven police officers. We have to make it a priority at when we're looking at the budget. We also have to make sure that our fire department is staffed as well. We've lost over a hundred uh firefighters as well. That is what's going to keep people here. Also, making sure that we're creating housing for our community. Our our working-class community can't afford to live here, so they're leaving. We need to build housing, and we need to remove all the barriers and the naysayers that say, not in my backyard, housing, affordable housing, and we need to also make sure that our transportation connects to the jobs. That's what I will move forward on, and those are things that I've done before, and I will bring that leadership to the city council once again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one minute? I would like to say on public safety.
Uh, you could use your rebuttal for thirty seconds if like, okay.
Thank you. So what I would like to say here is that I agree we should have more police officers, but I want quality, not quantity. I want to fund for police department to get better, good, excellent police officers and higher officers. I am them. Uh the trending has to be tougher, uh better in order to help the community. I work with only a hem uh full of police officers, but we were able to stop the crimes until we were in one finish. Yes.
Uh Mr Quintero?
Mind repeating the question again? There's been a lot of things that have happened in between now and then.
Sure. Uh we recently wrote about how residents are fleeing San Jose in staggering numbers. How would you improve the quality of life for people in East San Jose?
Thank you for that question. Unfortunately, that uh that crisis has hit uh personally. Uh family members who've had to make their way to the Central Valley, to Hollister, to find places where to live because they've been priced out. Uh others have just decided that uh the situation here in Sapporo says unbearable, and they've decided to move on. And uh all of those situations are unacceptable. Uh we need to ensure that we're uh prioritizing public safety. Uh issues such as quality of life, where our communities are now being taken over in certain parts by individuals who've been affected by the housing crisis. And so now they're making their place in parks. It's unacceptable to allow them to do that. It's unacceptable to allow them to deteriorate in these public uh settings. Uh and and so all of these things are 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 things that we need to address. Housing obviously is a linchpin in all of this. And uh we need to make ensure that we move forward on uh fast-tracking uh the measuring money for affordable housing and other projects so that we can increase the supply and the demand.
Thank you. And Mr Ortiz?
Thank you uh so much for the question. As a leader in District Five, I've organized and participated in community town halls on public safety. Uh the increase in car break-ins in our neighborhoods, armed robberies, and the public use of drugs in our community. Uh as a city, we need to invest more in recruiting quality first responders, firefighters, and law enforcement professionals. This means we must increase staff benefits to become competitive with other municipalities and to fill these vacant positions. Uh our city must also prioritize people-centered approaches to crime in our neighborhoods. Like other young people who grew up in disenfranchised communities, I joined a gang at a young age. Luckily, I was able to turn my life around. We must provide our youth with the same opportunity. We can do this through mentorship, mental health services, and job training programs. The only way we can address the neighborhood crimes of tomorrow is by investing in our community today. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is our last question. We're going to uh have it just be thirty minutes, thirty seconds in the interest of time. Um so one hotly debated issue, we asked this question before, is whether undocumented residents should vote in city elections. Do you support this proposal? And we will start with Ms Nguyen.
This is.
Oh, we can't hear you, Ms Ms Nguyen. Uh it went on mute again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I believe this is a very uh sensitive and humanity uh issue. Uh I I am an immigrant myself. I understand how it is to live in a very dictatorship country, in a unsafe country. I would love to be able to extend what we are having here to other people, but making sure that we follow the law. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Ms Campos?
Thank you for the question. Uh I think this is a an issue that is facing all of us. When we think about this district and we're all agree, um we have a hundred thousand people that live in this community. And people constantly ask all of us, well, how much is it going to take to win? You know, I'm sad to say that maybe it'll take us eight thousand to win. Eight thousand, because we don't get that many people that are currently voting when we know that there's about anywhere from thirty to forty thousand people that are registered to vote. We've got to do better at making sure that people understand that to be able to vote is a priority. Oh, thank you. Sorry.
All right. Um Mr Quintero?
That anytime we can expand franchise, we should seek to do it. My priority, however, would be to ensure that we can provide access for citizenship so that we aren't only voting in local elections, but can also vote and take full part in the entire uh in the in the entire democratic process that we have here in the United States. Uh we're not going to go ahead and change it locally, change uh situations only at the local level. We need to provide the resources so that people can fully get a franchise, fix the 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 broken system that we have in place. Uh and so that's my approach that we should.
Thank you. And Mr Ortiz?
Thank you so much for this uh question. Now, time and time uh again, uh it has shown that when individuals have been disenfranchised, right? When they do not have uh the ability to have their voice heard or um participate in local elections, uh they are in turn taken advantage of by those who uh represent them and and govern office, right? What essentially uh this is, right, is is taxation uh without representation. Uh the members of our undocumented community pay taxes. Uh their families attend our schools and and they give a lot to our community. So. Sorry.
Thank you. And Mr Benia?
Well, what we need is a pathway to immigration. I mean, it's something that we've been talking about forever. We've got a house controlled by the Dems, a Senate controlled by the Dems, Vice President, President Dem. Uh if there's ever going to be an opportunity to really find that pathway, this is it. Uh unfortunately, that has not happened. And I think that these these conversations are short-term Band-Aid, attempts at short-term Band-Aid solutions to the bigger problems, that we need comprehensive immigration reform. We need a proper pathway to ensure that our community has the full weight and benefits of the United States of America.
Thank you. And that concludes our panel for D five. Thank you all so much for joining us.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, everyone.
And we are going to take a minute to put up our next uh candidate, next set of candidates for our last panel of the evening. Um so I'd like to welcome the candidates for San Jose City Council District Seven, which includes Seven Trees, Rock Springs, Tully Center neighborhoods, as well as Kelly Park and Vietnam Town. Candidates include incumbent San Jose Councilmember Maya Esparza and Challengers Eastside Union High School District Trustee Von Lee and Bian Duong. Um and I see that we are all here. Uh let's begin with opening statements from Ms Esparza.
Hi, forgive the sound. I I'm actually at a community event uh this evening. And so uh you might hear some background sound so I can step away to attend this forum. Uh I just wanted to say that growing up in San Jose, I have spent my life serving the community that I love. As a child, I saw my parents, who were both educators, fighting to create a stronger voice for their students, for the families like ours, and those values shaped my life. So whether as a former school board member at the Franklin McKinley School District uh in the nonprofit sector at the American Red Cross, or leading initiatives like the All the Way Home Campaign to End Veteran Homelessness, or as a city council member in District Seven, I have always and always will work to meet the needs of my constituents by giving them a voice and putting their needs first. District Seven exemplifies the diversity we celebrate here in San Jose with many working families. And over the last three years, I've worked hard to overcome decades of neglect by our city government to improve public safety, bring parts, playgrounds, and fix and improve our streets. Thank you.
Ms Lee?
Everyone, my name is Von Lee, and I'm running for San Jose City Council in D seven. My family escaped my boat on the last day of the fall of Saigon. I'm so grateful that we arrived safely to USA, and I'm thankful, America, to those who helped us to start our life. My experience as an immigrant taught me the importance of hard work and public services. My last job worked for City San Jose was redevelopment agency with a development officer before operating my own insurance business successfully for twenty years. I bring thirty-five years of community service involvement with the diverse residents of the District Seven, including almost the last twelve year serving as elected trustee on East Side Union High School District Board. I am independent voice, not beholden to any special interests, and I'm a grassroots person who want to make a difference and help improve the quality of life of resident. Thank you for sounds this podcast to host a candidate forum and moderator, Jenna, this evening, and those are watching this debate. I can only participate in this forum for thirty minutes tonight due to in reconcile, in reckless schedule conflict.
Um, Mr Duong? Oh, you're muted.
Okay, here we are. Hi, my name is Bian Dawn. Um I'm running for city council in District Seven in uh City San Jose here. Uh similar story, I, as an immigrant, I came over here in nineteen seventy-five, and people like yourself have came out and supported my family, and I am grateful and thankful for this country. And I have served uh in the fire service for twenty-seven years as a fireman. I've served the city of San Jose for the last twenty-two years. Uh I've seen problem firsthand, and we're we're talking about homelessness. We're talking about mentally ill. Um I I've gone to fire, medical crisis, crime, and I've seen the deterioration of District Seven. It is not okay for a community to to have to live in fear, crime-infested, unsafe, and dirty environment. You know, this is why I run for city council. I want to clean uh the street. I want to reduce the the homelessness by getting them back on their feet. I want to reduce crime and support for public safety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get into the questions.
Sure.
Is the only race we feature tonight that has an incumbent on the ballot? For the two challengers, how would you do the job differently than Councilmember Esparza? And for the council member, why do you think voters should give you another four years at City Hall? Let's start with Ms Lee.
Well, the first thing I know that a lot of community uh leaders as well as residents uh asked me to run because they want to have a new leadership because in the stand-up, they have not received any communication, you know, from the office of the incumbent. And they have not seen a lot of progress on of the safety, homelessness, housing, as well as small business uh was were neglected. So I think that this is a time for people, the residents, want to have a new leadership. And they trusted me because I'm an elected uh elected official in a school board. I have done my job in the twelve years to balance the budgets, to listen to the constituents, to listen to the voice of student, the parents and teachers, and we work together collaboratively. So that's why I'm running, and that's why I got a lot of support from everyone.
Thank you. Mr Duong?
Oops, sorry about that. Um let me, uh, um, as a candidate for District Seven, I have worked with many city council and mayor. I have volunteered with the Red Cross. I I want to create what you call a win-win situation. And I believe I want to become the bridge that bring our community together. Now, I know that within our city, the the system is somewhat broken because I've been, I understand the process, and I can get off and start running versus, you know, learning the process. As a firefighter, I am result-oriented. When I go to a fire, if I don't put the fire out, it's going to burn another house. If I go to emergency call, if I don't help the person, the person will die. So it's result-oriented base, and that's what make. So it's result-oriented base, and that's what make me different because I care about our community, I want to make a change, and I'm not a career politician.
Thank you. And Mrs. Esparsa?
Thank you. This is a great question because when I ran in twenty eighteen, District Seven had been neglected for years. And so I immediately got to work to bring more resources into District Seven. I fixed parts, I've added parts, I've brought police foot patrols into District Seven, including the very first Vietnamese-speaking foot patrol in, in, in San Jose. I've also worked on policy, but one of the things that I've done the most is I've worked with neighborhoods throughout our city. We're beautifully diverse, but we have a lot of people that had also been neglected, whose voices hadn't been heard. And I'm proud to say I've appointed District Seven residents from all over the district to commissions. We've created neighborhood associations, we've created events, and supported our schools and after-school programs. To learn more what I've done in neighborhoods in District Seven, go to mayasparsa.com/neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Can I have rebuttal?
Sure, thirty, you have thirty.
All right. I want to address this. The Vietnamese-American community has been neglected. The Vietnamese-American businesses have been neglected during the COVID- nineteen. I am the person that really went out to the businesses and worked with them, helped them to find those grant applications from federal and state. By the way, right now, a lot of people mentioned to me that the council office does not have, did not have a Vietnamese staff. And, and it's really, really disturbing me when I know that you are the one that elected and did not have enough, you know, staff to serve the community.
Thank you. Mrs. Esparsa?
Thank you. I'd love to address that. So as far as I mentioned the foot patrol that I brought, the first Vietnamese-speaking foot patrol, that was at Little Saigon and have actually been working with Little Saigon to provide them the support. Even though Caltrans is a state responsibility during COVID, my staff worked with the Little Saigon businesses and the state to bring more resources and clean up the area. I also have, do have Vietnamese-speaking staff. And furthermore, most of my staff actually live in District Seven and have grown up in District Seven, whether it's Seven Trees, West Evergreen, or Tropical Lanai. My staff comes from the district and they're residents, and we work hard for our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have rebuttal?
Put all that, please. So when our sitting incumbent Meyer saying that the first community policing, to me, I talked to huge amount of businesses, small businesses, including Little Saigon and Vietnam Town and Grand Century Mall. They complained that the fact is, is every single business and every single resident paid for the protection of the police department. Now they have to pay for overtime, off-duty police officers to protect them again. That's double taxation and without a true representation. And, and we've seen that the continue, the, the crime have risen, and the streets continue to be dirty. And so when, when our sitting incumbents say they've done something different, I don't.
That was thirty seconds. Thank you. Ms.?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on my phone. Can I answer that?
Sure. I'm Ms. Lee, voiced that she would want to offer rebuttal as well, so.
All right.
Okay, so do I get to respond to Mr. Duong's rebuttal first?
Um, sure, we can do that.
Okay, I would love to answer that. So, um, working at the city over twenty years, I'm sure Mr. Doan understands budget and how public safety is paid for. So the city of San Jose in Measure B, we actually lost a lot of police officers. When I got elected, I was able to work with the police chief to move the training area. The police used to train their officers in District Lincoln, which includes Little Saigon, and it's the busiest police district in the entire city by far. And so we were able to move that to another district, reassess District Seven, and I brought those foot patrols into District Seven. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's my turn, right? I'm going to go back to City Councilmember Maya is when she was resigned. During the two years, you have not brought any, any Vietnamese-American staff on your team. Besides that, you wait until like about half the month, about six months ago, you brought back the Vietnamese memorial statue in the Vietnamese-American Heritage Garden. Why did you not do it three years ago? Why do you wait until the election coming up and bring those Vietnamese project into the Vietnamese-American, Vietnamese Heritage Garden?
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
So I do have Vietnamese staff. You're welcome to come to District Seven events where, where you can meet her. And, and as I also wanted to address the Thank You America Monument. So if you remember the Mercury News article from twenty nineteen, that was when we applied for the grant. The city council voted to apply for the grant, and we were able to get the money for the Thank You America statue. It was put on hold during COVID because a lot of the PRNS folks, frankly, that were working on that were keeping people alive, distributing food, helping with testing sites.
Thank you. All right. Let's, let's move on to the next question. So what is, what would you say are the most pressing issues in the district? And how would you address them? Let's go with Mr. Duong.
Well, first of all, public safety. We've only got eleven hundred police officers. We need to raise it above two thousand. The fire department, we only got seven hundred. We need to get that to above a thousand, according to any metropolitans. Now, we need to do that. We need to support our public safety. That's one of the issues. The second issue is that we have a huge amount of homelessness in our city. District Seven, we have more than thirty percent of the brunt, so therefore we should get more funding. And the third is that we don't have enough housing. We need to build up. We need to make sure that companies out there have given incentives so they can build housing so people can have houses to live in and create jobs that they can afford to live in this Silicon Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Esparsa?
Thank you. So I think the top three issues are quality of life for District Seven. When I first got here, actually, I worked with the city to clean up over a million pounds of trash off of Monterey Road. We did eight hundred thousand pounds in twenty nineteen, and then we did the remainder in twenty twenty. We need to have more resources for our community. I'll give you an example. I've brought in dumpster days into the district. And since COVID, my office has picked up through our dumpster days in different neighborhoods in the district, over a million pounds of trash from neighborhoods. And a lot of those hard-hit neighborhoods include apartment buildings that have residents that really can't put the sofa out in front for two weeks to have it picked up. Third, I think housing and homelessness is a huge issue, which is why I authored a policy, a siting policy, so that every district in our city really addresses on the solutions, not just District Seven, which is more in the brunt.
Thank you. And Ms. Lee?
Well, when I knocked on the door of, you know, Residence D seven, couple issues is very important to our D seven, safety, homelessness, affordable housing, improved communication with residents, and job development, support small business. So talk a little bit about safety. Resident and business owner do not feel safe at all because the burglarize, because the car and home vandalism in the neighborhoods. So I will work very closely with the Department of Police to ensure that we have more foot patrol in the neighborhood and more neighborhood watch group to support each other. We also need more police officer and community service officer so that our resident and all age can feel safe. For homelessness, it's a huge problem with homeless. We need to have the mental health services and more resource, but we need to tweak that why that D seven is the second largest district has more homeless than any other district beside District Three. Affordable housing, we need more housing, our income level, the improved communication. Thank you.
All right. And let's go on to our next question. We often hear about how tough it is to do business in San Jose. Permits are costly and approval processes take years. Name three things you would do to create a more business-friendly environment. Let's start with Mrs. Esparsa.
Thank you. I'll tell you what I've done. Since being elected, I've kept the interests of working families a top priority, creating well-paying jobs, creating community. And that's been the cornerstone of my work. So when I first got elected, I worked with Mayor, excuse me, to launch the Monterey Corridor Working Group. And that's to improve and support the businesses in Monterey Corridor, which is one of the city's two industrial areas and what should be a major job center, as well as the southern gateway to the city. Second, I've supported small businesses in District Seven, including going door-to-door in Little Saigon and La Placita, handing out COVID materials to help our business during COVID. They need to have help as we get out of COVID. Third, I co-authored an ADA compliance for small businesses so that we can support our businesses while expanding access for our disabled residents.
Thank you. Ms. Lee?
Well, I am a small business owner among the other two candidates, but I feel that, you know, small business owner, we did not have that much support from City of San Jose. We were neglected during pandemic. I myself already, you know, involved it to help the small business to apply for the grant from the city and county. But my part of this is the first thing is we have to streamline the process to support, you know, the business owner. One thing is I have a friend who want to open the business, but it took them, what, six months before they can open the door? So how much time that they have, how much revenue that they have to lose? I'm on the board of Work2Future. I can ensure that we bring more job to all of those businesses, and we create more opportunity for younger generation to, and apply and train them so they can work in the businesses or any other career that they want. Another thing is we need to have the communication with business owner, and we need to bring that safe because otherwise we will not support them.
Thank you. Mr. Duong?
So there's four things I like to talk about. In order to improve the businesses, one, we have to reduce the fees. Two, we have to streamline the process. We have to take away the, the, reduce the, the red tapes and the regulation. That hurts most businesses and especially the immigrant businesses in District Seven. And the third biggest one is you've got to have incentive and support for small businesses and the new and the old. You cannot continue to have crime written in the business area. People cannot survive and have businesses when it's being broken into every single week. And that's why we need to strengthen the process, reduce the fees, streamline incentive for the new and the old businesses, and reduce the regulation and the red tapes that we have within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to apologize. We have technical difficulties with our timer, so I'm just doing it off my phone. That's the ringing that you hear when it's a minute. So we recently reported on concerns about the increased traffic fatalities. What would you do as a council member to address this? And let's start with Ms. Lee.
Well, for the fatality on the street, I know that we need to work closely with the police department. And the part of this is we need to strengthen, you know, our system for the lighting. It's very important when the pedestrian walk around the neighborhood, but they don't have enough light. And we have to look into what are consequences when they, they don't feel safe to walk in the neighborhood and the light, the traffic lights. We have to make sure that we line up with the, the traffic light when the other, and other camera that we can look into for people did have to be careful when they drive by with on the red light. So it's very important when people know that they actually have really been watching. So we have to look into different avenue to support, you know, those resident.
Mr. Duong?
Yes, there's, there's many things. First of all, it's about educating the pedestrian, what is their rights? And then the education towards driver to be aware of pedestrian. We create more bicycle lane and, and create barrier that protect the pedestrian. We can use both sound lights in order to get the driver to aware that when pedestrian is crossing the street. We can use radars to slow down the, the speeding. Not only that, we can also use license plate readers for those who offend by going too fast down on a residential street. And by, again, by education, both the driver and the pedestrian, sound and lighting to notify the driver using the radar to slow down the driver, and then license plate readers that will penalize those who.
Thank you. Mrs. Esparsa?
Thank you. Well, I'm glad my opponents agree with the things that I'm already doing. So number one, there is homeless outreach being done. Many, many of the victims that we've seen are part of our unhoused population. And so I authored a policy to do outreach to homeless encampments, particularly those in Vision Zero corridors. Two, on Center Road during COVID, I was able to work with our staff to get state grants and have the build-outs on Center Road. While we are working on a longer-term solution, working with our state legislature, we're actually lobbying for those, that funding this year. Three, I'm the only place in the city that you'll see barriers. We have pedestrian barriers on Monterey Corridor, and we installed some build-outs. And on the nineteenth of April, we will install the very first cameras in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Many renters faced eviction in the wake of COVID, in the wake of the COVID- nineteen pandemic, and relief from the state and county was slow. What local policies are needed to protect renters who are on the brink of losing their homes? And let's start with Mr. Duong.
Well, first of all, prevention i- is the key, right? We've already had the state mandate that helps the renter, but whoops. Prevention, sorry about that. My light just went out. Prevention is the key to keeping our resident from losing their rent and go into the street, become homeless. Secondly, that we have to protect the renter, but yet we, we have the rent control. We also have to protect the landlord as well because there are landlords who have to pay their mortgage as well, and they fifty thousand dollars into debt because this mortuary. At some point, the renter have to take on their responsibility with the assistance from the government and the city and the county in order to keep them afloat and out of the homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Esparsa?
Thank you. So three things that I've already done, actually, one of them, so the Ellis Act, I led the fight on the Ellis Act to offer protections before COVID. And we already had the weakest Ellis Act in California, and I led the fight to try and strengthen them. We lost that vote five-six, and so that will be coming back to the city council. Two, during COVID, I brought the only rental assistance center outside of City Hall here to District Seven, and it sits in the district office of the Franklin McKinley, Franklin McKinley School District at six-four-five Lowell Creek Road. Folks can still get legal help there. Three, I worked with tenants to be the first in the city to ensure that tenant protections were built into a TFR bond so that residents didn't live in unsafe, frankly unconscionable living conditions.
Thank you. And Ms. Lee?
Yes, we need to work with the federal, state, and county government, first thing to build more affordable housing unit and to streamline the development process so that all type of housing to get built quickly. We'll need to also to protect, you know, the tenant in the same way that we're going to have to work to make sure that, you know, county, city, and state have some rent subsidy during the COVID- nineteen. A lot of rent tenants are very suffering because, you know, the COVID- nineteen. I also want to look into also the rent command sense, rent control in the short term to bridge the gap of ever increase in rents and the scarcity of rental housing. We also need to protect the mobile home parks in our community, which provides safe and quality housing for some of our low-income residents. So technically, is we want to need more housing to support those people. So technically is we want to need more housing to support those people that need help and we need to go case by case because now it's a longer list of the Section 8, the housing people have been waiting. So I think we have to look over and we maybe probably have to have audit committee to look into those issue.
Thank you. And we'll go on to closing statements. For this one, we'll keep it at a minute and let's start with Mrs. Esparsa.
Thank you. I'm known as one of the city hall's hardest-working council members. We've made tremendous gains in the past three years. I've brought public safety, things like foot patrols and new fire station, advocated for a new fire training center that's getting built in District 7 and, and there is more work to do. I, I just want to leave you with this. It was also part of a coalition that really fought to bring equity to the city, not just for one foot patrol or, or a library program, which are all really important, but we really need to assess how we spend all of the city's budget and the choices that the city makes with the money it has. I'm pleased to say that we did create the office in 2020, but there is more work to do and the city is actually applying equity into its budget this year. And so there's so much more work to do. We've already added some infrastructure to District 7. I look forward to adding more. Thank you.
Ms. Lee?
Yes, I'm very honored to receive a lot of support from elected officials like Moore Supervisor Otoli, War President J Manuel Herrera, other school board trustee, former General Binwin and many organization, community leaders, teachers, educator, parent, media and student who encouraged me to run this time because they want to change the new leadership. And besides that, I also is the person that very trustworthy will keep my promise to our resident. I'm a doer, not talker, but I am effective collaborative leader who understand how to get things done. I care about our community and all of these diverse residents. I will be a voice for them at City Hall. If I get elected, I will be the only Asian-American and Vietnamese voice in City Hall. I really appreciate all the people has been supporting me and I really want to take, advocate the fair share for District 7. So please visit my website, www.vonlee2022.com.
Thank you. And Mr. Chuang?
I'm not a career politician. I'm a fireman who want to make change to make the city better. I'm willing to work and support small businesses, take care of our youth, bring up our library and school and protect our environment. We have 6,800 city employee, police officer and firemen. I greatly appreciate them, but we need to bring them up to what you call competitive wages and benefits. And in order to bring the city up, we have to bring our police force and our firefighting force to above what we have now. Now, again, I want to make changes because I'm just a simple person. I am not an electorate official. I am not a politician. I've seen and I live in this valley. I used to ride horses up in Bossum Hill. I've seen that is best. I've seen it at the way it is, the deterioration of District 7 and I want to make changes. Vote for me, Bien Don. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for joining us. That concludes our San Jose City Council Candidate Forum. I want to thank all the candidates for their participation and their insightful comments and I want to thank you all who tuned in. A recording of tonight's forum will be available on our website and in a short recap story. I'm now going to pass it off to Josh Burrows, our executive director and co-founder, for a final message.
Thank you, Jenna. And once again, a big thank you to all of our candidates for participating tonight and to all of you who've tuned in. Josh Burrows here, co-founder, executive director, Sounds This Spotlight. And Ramona and I just want to really thank the whole Sounds Like community for coming and getting behind Sounds This Spotlight over our first three years. If you enjoy our reporting, if you find value in our reporting and programming like this, please consider becoming a sustaining member with a monthly or annual donation. Help us keep our good reporters like Jen and others on the ground and bring you the stories you love. So with that, visit our website at soundsitspotlight.com. You all have a great evening and go look to all of our candidates on June 7th. Have a good night.
Good night.